Letting everybody back in.
Let everyone in and I, we're starting to talk.
I'll get it. Okay, David, we're recording, everybody's back in.
Great. There's a cough.
Watch out.
All right, welcome, everybody. We have just completed our public hearing on draft local law two of twenty twenty-two, and we are now going to start the regular meeting. It is seven o'clock. This regular meeting is called the order, let's rise for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Present.
Mayor Shaw.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Absent.
Trustee Casker.
Here.
Trustee Shara.
Absent. Okay, I just wanted to make a few comments. Most of you probably received the urgent alert today about the main gate and how it's functioning. It's functioning now identically to the south gate, which means that it closes in between each vehicle. So you need to drive accordingly. If you were to try and scoot through the main gate when it's open for the car ahead of you, it's going to come down on your hood. So please be very careful of that. We don't want to see anyone's hood damaged, but fair warning. And I will also say that the south gate is running already on the license plate reader. You probably don't notice because typically it would open for you if you had a tag, but it's actually opening for you if you've registered your vehicle automatically. And Chief, do you want to comment on the status of the front gate at this point in time?
Sure. We're expected to be online either tomorrow or Friday the latest. We'll be up and running.
Okay, and do you have it working temporarily?
They have, yes, the company has it working temporarily for the first vehicles that were registered, just as, just as a trial.
Okay, good. And how's it coming so far?
So far, so good.
There's gonna be hiccups, I'm sure.
The only issue like you just addressed is cars not stopping for the gate to shut. The car in front of you, as soon as that car goes through, the gate is closing, it's coming down on your car. It's happened already, it's gonna continue to happen.
Right.
So it's important that everybody stops.
So we will put a sign right on the gate itself that says, this gate closes after each vehicle. And we can post it right into the middle of the gate. And I suppose we can also put some sort of buffer or rubber cushion or something along.
We have that already.
Okay.
The gates do have a foam underneath them. Prior incidents with that. To try to minimize the damage as much as possible.
Right, okay, thank you, Chief. All right, can we pull up the reports and we'll get started there? And we'll, we'll share the screen with the audience and the trustees. Whatever works for you. Okay, now Denise isn't here today to give this report, and we have multiple reports. Do either trustee Caster or Shaw want to make any general comments about the water reports this month?
Just generally, I spoke with Denise earlier today and all the water meters will be functioning as of today. So for the next water meeting, water reading, everything should be working.
So for.
Hopefully will be the most accurate water reading we've had.
All right, so for background for everyone, what you're saying is that we had a bunch of meters that were broken or not functioning properly in the past.
Building cycles.
Okay, and also to be discussed in executive session, Brian, has there been any change to, to the rules related to sending people with overdue water bills to collection vis a vis COVID?
I think it remains in effect through June at this point.
Through June?
Yeah.
Okay, so we still would abide by that series of letters that you have presented to us. Okay, and we can discuss that further in executive session. Okay, we can move on from all of the water reports to the DPW, if you don't mind. And hold on, we're just gonna pull it up for you. There we go, thank you.
So we, we installed the last ballard at the main gate, finally showed up two weeks ago. So that's been done and the camera installed on top of it. We've been cutting brush and limbs that are hanging in the road while we plow and hits the sides of the truck. We plowed and or salted roads January twenty-ninth, February fourth, February fifth, and February twelve. Two of those events were ice, rain and ice, which we used a lot of salt on. We had to salt every couple of hours just because of the frost in the ground and refreezing. So, so far this year, we've purchased about six hundred tons of salt.
How does that, in the context of other years, how does that?
We've had years where we've used over a thousand. I put in for eight hundred every year, so like I said, we've purchased about six hundred, I still have at least two hundred in storage. So I'm feeling pretty confident about the rest of the winter. We also coned off an area at the Weewaw for ice skating. There's currently about twelve inches of ice.
Brought up.
The chief had gotten a safety rope that we left over there and Mike Santiani donated some aluminum ladders. So I have an aluminum ladder there.
Oh, that's real nice. I didn't know that. I'll have to thank him. And have you seen anyone skating?
I haven't.
Okay, but you said you cleared off the spot.
Yes, we coned it off and then, you know, we shoveled it.
Wow, thank you. One of our residents, Tom Garbet, has a small unit that he would be happy to loan. It's, you know, you sit in it and it's got a thing that goes down and can clear snow if you want, rather than shoveling it.
If, you know, I don't, hopefully we won't need it.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a big storm tonight.
Well, we're supposed to have some rain tomorrow and then it's supposed to get real cold tomorrow night. So.
Okay.
But if we, if we get a heavy snow or something, then it would be nice to have something like that to clear it off. We had a leak on the water plant roof that was leaking on our chemical pumps and near, very close to electric outlets. And it, it happened a day or day or two before we were supposed to get the last rain that we got. We got over an inch of rain. So I called Rob Dolbaum and he came the following day and had it fixed before the rainstorm. I don't, I didn't get the bill yet for, I'm not sure how much it was, but.
It was an emergency action.
I had to get it done.
Right, and he's the town.
Superintendent.
Right, but he also has a roofing business, is that correct? Okay, well, that was very, very good.
Otherwise, I would never would have gotten somebody there.
Let us know when you get the bill.
I will.
Yeah.
Also, we had a, a water pump failure at the Mountain Farm Pump Station. We have a backup, we're using the backup, and I'm trying to get replacement parts for the pump that failed. Where I've checked so far, they told me that it's, there's like a seven-month lead time. The pump, the company that makes the pump was bought out by another company, so we may have to get a new pump. Depending on, you know, I can't wait seven months for replacement parts.
No, so this works on the same redundancy as the main water plant.
So if something happens to the backup, then we won't have anything if we don't. So we may have to buy another.
Right, so you'll work with John on the specs?
I, I've already met with the pump people. So I'm just waiting to hear back.
Maybe there's something used on one of the bid sites.
I don't know about that. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not gonna be a very expensive pump. It's not a huge pump like we have in the water plant.
What's your guess of it?
I would think in the five thousand dollar range. Maybe, maybe a little less.
It's a lot to me.
Well, not when you consider what the ones at the water plant cost.
Okay, anything else?
We also had a water main break on Patterson Brook Road two weeks ago. That was a nightmare. Just because it didn't surface, we couldn't find it. It was dark, we had been plowing snow for twenty-two hours. But luckily, the next morning, we did locate it and got it repaired within a couple of hours, so.
Yeah, well done. Yeah, I know you guys were exhausted from.
Yeah.
You were already up twenty-four hours when this, when this came up. So thank you very much, we appreciate it. I know it was an inconvenience for some residents, but it's one of the things we deal with, with our infrastructure. Anything else? Okay, so I would just like to officially ask you to get your budget in as soon as you can. It'd be great if you could do it before the end of February.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, great. And I'd also like to mention, I've mentioned it many times in the past, but we have a very active climate committee group going now. I really would like to look at alternatives to salt or alternatives to supplement salt for next season. I, you know, in terms of the impact on the environment and the lakes. So I don't know if, I, I know other, there's formulas, there's mixes. I'm not really familiar with it. I hear it's a little more expensive, obviously, but we should at least look into it. And I, I have a feeling the climate committee would be willing to do that. Okay, Chief, would you like to, we'll pull up your report?
Well, we responded, well, we answered two hundred and forty-three calls for service. One traffic ticket, twenty-two warnings issued. Three fire calls, two medical calls. We assisted the town of Tuxedo Police once. We were assisted one time. We patrol two thousand one hundred and twenty-one miles and the approximate daily count of vehicles entering the park was four hundred and seventy-one. Denise and I have been working on the budget, so you'll, you'll have that very soon.
Thank you.
The only thing I, I just want to bring up is, you know, everybody knows that we've been having internet issues. And when the internet goes down, the south gate goes down. We have no cameras out there and no controls. So there's a lot of times when when we have, have nothing out there and we'll bring an extra officer in to stand out there to let vehicles come in and out. This happened this, just this past week, and a lot of residents were getting upset and rightfully so. I mean, they're coming from wherever they're coming from, they get to the south gate and find out nobody's letting me in, you know, and nothing's working. So they'll call on the cell phone and we explain to them that the gate's down, then they have to turn around. So it's, I'm just asking to please be patient with us until the internet is more stable.
Yeah, and, and just to further a conversation that John had with you, the communications committee is working very hard to find alternatives to beef up the security of the internet with a variety of different providers. It's very expensive, but we're looking into everything. You're also benefiting from the consultant we hired for the communications committee, Walter. He's also focused on this task. And so I would agree with you, I, I share your, your request for people to be patient. So that people understand there's only one provider in the village, and that's Cablevision. And the wiring and the functionality of the routers and everything else between the south gate and the booth are not up to par. We, we've been making changes. And so there will be times that it goes out and we will need to bring in a part-time officer. So I hope everyone can be patient, although I understand the frustration. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, so court, it stands as it is, we have no one to discuss it. Would you like to discuss the treasury or leave it as a written report? Legal, same question for Brian?
That's his question.
Okay, anybody have any questions on legal or treasury? Okay. Has, have the board members reviewed the January minutes? Okay, have the board members reviewed the Board of Assessors' January minutes?
I have not.
Oh, gosh. So we can't approve any of them. Do you want to take a minute? Let's do that. Let's take a minute so we can get them passed. Do you have a copy? It's, the copy of the minutes are online. And you can bring them up. You need to look at the assessors. You need to look at the, at the monthly, is that right?
My internet just went out. Yeah, no.
The other way around?
Assessors, yeah.
Okay. They will show resolutions. So as long as you're generally satisfied, I request that you put your trust into Elizabeth. Who has a copy of the minutes? Which one are you looking for? Assessors, we have the Board of Assessors.
So you were just looking for the.
Minutes, actual minutes.
I had the Board of Assessors ones.
Other resolution, actual minutes. Take a second.
I need a copy of the Board of Assessors' minutes. Oh, you know, check it here, they're online. Do you, do you have the website pulled up?
I think that's only one page, you want to share it?
Yeah, it's only one page, if you want him to share it.
Yeah, I'm happy to share.
Go ahead, go ahead and share it and you'll see it on the board.
That's nothing.
Other than the members, this is pretty much it.
Yeah, that's pretty much it right there.
That's pretty simple.
Okay.
I'm good?
Yep.
You good? Sorry about that.
Okay. Do we make comments? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Just like to compliment Jeff and his crew. It's been a hell of a winter and his guys have done a hell of a job. Jeff's just learning, but I mean, his guys are really.
Hear, hear. Hear, hear. You know, you'd think that since I'm mayor, I'd get Pepperidge Road Plaid first, but it just doesn't happen. I think Jeff's doing that on purpose. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, anyone in, on the Zoom call have any comments on the agenda during, for public hearing, public comment session? If you do, raise your hand, because your speakers are off. Anything? Okay, public comment period's closed. Consent agenda, let me just review the items. Adding all the written reports to the permanent record. Approving the January minutes for both meetings. And police department inventory. Approve the removal of obsolete computer equipment consisting of two HP Compact 7800s, one Dell and two Acer's. The suing numbers are on file with the clerk and they're also posted. Does anyone need to see them? Okay. And a request has come in from Jim Hayes, who's on the climate committee. He would like to have a subdivision including Jeff, John and the chief to look at emissions from vehicles. And he contacted each of these village employees directly at my request. They have all agreed to contribute. And so that's what that is all about. I wouldn't mind taking a minute. Chief, if you're prepared, to just share what you shared with me about the hybrid SUV.
I can try to wing it.
The point is, there's a good savings.
There's a good savings, so we, we the last two vehicles we purchased were the hybrids first time. Did an analysis of, you know, gas mileage and fuel consumption for six-month period with the the gas-powered vehicle compared to the hybrid vehicle. And I don't remember the percentage of savings off the top of my head, somewhere around thirty, forty percent.
Yeah, that's terrific. Jim mentioned that there's a town, I don't know if it was in Connecticut, but it uses all Tesla.
Yeah, that's big, Yonkers too.
It'll never happen.
They're actually cheaper than the Fords.
Are they?
Yeah.
They have the power you need. Wow. Do you know how much it would cost to equip one with police equipment?
No.
Nothing wrong looking into it.
I can look into it.
And Jeff, I'm sure he'll be looking at all your vehicles and wanting, you know, information on that. Unfortunately, that's probably one of our biggest areas of pollution, those vehicles. Okay, so do any of the trustees want me to take out any of the items of the consent agenda? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
I'd be resolved, the Board of Trustees approve items A through D on the consent agenda. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we're moving on to old business. Do the trustees have any questions before I call a vote on local law number two?
Yeah, just nothing major, I just, this is new, we haven't really discussed it for a while. There's a lot of specifics in here, so Brian, my understanding is there's still a whole lot of work for the board to do as far as determining the rates, how much profit we're gonna do.
Yeah, the sort of the framework to allow you to do that.
Yeah, and then if, for some crazy reason, we didn't do it, we, this year, we didn't get it done, we don't have to. Do this.
Continue your existing system.
Until we do, okay. Okay.
I mean, your rates are what they are now, so they'll stay there until you change it.
Right, the budget would still be general funds. You're right, we don't, this just gives us the ability to continue to work to, to get there, which we know we want to get to. It makes sense, it's fair, I understand, I just wanna see what we're, we're bound to.
Yep, good questions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I assume we're ready to call that vote. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approve draft local law number two of two thousand twenty-two. A local law to further define Village of Tuxedo Park, New York Code, Chapter seventy-eight, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Section seventy-eight dash twenty-four, sewer rents or charges. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next order of business is a discussion that we'd like to start with the town. It's in its very early stages, nothing's really been committed. But as everyone may know that's been following this, we have proposed a relocation site for our DPW and village headquarters. And it's adjacent to the sewer area on a piece of property that the town owns. And so we're in very early discussions with the town on how we might make some sort of transition to allow us to use that property. And things have been kicked around. Does the board want to add anything?
One, one question on the, there's, in the schematic, there's a north gate.
Correct.
What's your idea for how that will be used? And does it make sense to kind of start, you know, thumbnailing a sketch, a concept, written concept for people to be able to see and comment on?
So I think that would be a great, yes, I would like to see a north gate. But as we've mentioned, it's in its very early stages, we don't have, we've never sought buy-in from the community at this point in time.
Right.
It was part of a study to see if there was room to do it, which we accomplished. But that does not mean we have to do it. I'll give you another example. There, I am currently looking at other spots for the village office as well. Okay? But if you, you can take them separately, and I think we should. And we should develop a plan to present detailing the pros and cons or whatever of this north gate, how it would function. Because I think that the date for this would be at least a year or two away, which gives us time.
Right.
But we should certainly prepare some sort of, some sort of documentation on it, maybe even do a traffic study.
Yeah, I think that's what people would want to kind of understand, so they can see if I live on the Weewaw.
If you live on the Weewaw, you've had a, you know, there's only a couple of houses.
Right.
And those homes have had it very quiet. But there's also the issue of convenience for others that are going north. But absolutely, we need to hear different people in different neighborhoods discuss it, and I could imagine there's gonna be pros and cons.
Also for the, the town side of it too, you know, it's bordered on a park and a road as well. Traffic study and how that would imply there's a development going in, seven houses off of Warwick Brook Road as well, that may be impacted. So.
And.
Definitely more.
Yeah, there's more. There's more housing. I remember I just posted a new four hundred and something thousand dollar.
Inherement.
Inherement, there's gonna be traffic there, and my understanding is that they intend to cut that railroad bridge down, which prevents large tractor trailers from going on that seventeen route. And that's gonna be, should be part of everyone's concerns, which is why I posted it.
It's awesome.
Okay, very good.
And then. Oh, and an email I saw earlier, John mentioned talking to another attorney about, you know, land use and also, so maybe the attorney can give us the options, you know.
Right.
Own annex, so all those.
For, for this, I wouldn't go to Rick, I'd go to Brian.
Yeah.
If I, if there are any nuances about land use that I, but Brian has this, basically Brian, what we're talking about is, there's a piece of property that's not usable for commercial development purposes for the town, owned by the town, squeezed next to our sewer plant. We hired an engineer to do a concept drawing to see if we could fit what we wanted in that little strip. And then the next step would be to make a deal with the town. And again, I want to preface this very preliminary, there's no promises have been made. And we're in the very early stages. I had an idea, I'm not a lawyer, but maybe somehow that gets an X to us, they get a tax break, I don't know how that works. But if you could look into some options for us, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can tell you the easiest thing is for you to own it first and then an exit, if you can.
Okay, and then.
Wire it.
Okay, so they wouldn't get it, so would they get a tax break, the town?
You say a tax break.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure they get a.
Purchase it from themselves.
Yeah, I'm saying if you acquire it, even if it's in the town, you could acquire it. The annexation process is much easier if it's a village-owned parcel, abutting the village.
Right.
Then it's a lot easier to annex it.
Right.
Require the normal annexation process, it's much smoother and much quicker process. So if you can work the deal with the town and basically acquire ownership of the parcel, then we would annex it. And it's just basically a resolution on the town side, it's pretty quick.
And we would meet together, wouldn't we?
You don't have to do all that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Much simpler process, they do their resolution, agree, and basically we annex it without all the public hearing process and all that.
I see.
Yeah, if you own it, that's the easiest way.
Chris, do you know if you guys are in the town, since you're on the town board, the town planning board, do you know if you're a village yet?
We are.
That's happened.
It's the village of the town of Tuxedo.
Village of the town.
The village of the town, if you look up all the, the town properties and the tax maps, Orange County calls it the village of the town of Tuxedo.
Okay, and.
Well, this is, yeah. Emailed you today, this is the problem you're gonna have, is you're getting.
It, it changed a year ago or just changed? It's because you guys have done no rebranding or anything on your website, right?
Well, we, I'm on the planning board, I have nothing to do with any of that. So you guys is all of us, because we're all members of the town as well.
Yeah, you're gonna run into problems as you did already, but that notice you got today, which said Village of Tuxedo Park, when it should have been Village of Tuxedo, and I think this is gonna be a problem going forward. There was a notice of a document, you know, that was.
Can we sue them for the use of our name?
What's that?
Can we sue them for the use of our name?
It has nothing to do with the Village of Tuxedo Park, when we're doing the work on the county side, but Village of Tuxedo Park, when it was actually a parcel in the Village of Tuxedo. Nothing to do with the Village of Tuxedo Park, when we were working on the county side, but Village of Tuxedo Park, when it was actually a parcel in the Village of Tuxedo.
We'll take all their mortgage money, anything that they want to send to us.
And just to clarify, Tinka, it's both. It's the town of Tuxedo and the village of the town of Tuxedo. It's not just the village. Then they have two sets of governments, sort of, but the town council are also village trustees.
To twill it.
And they have a supervisor, but they do not have a mayor. So that was clever.
Mm hmm. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Appreciate your input, everyone. Next, good questions. Thank you, Brian. Okay, let's move on. All right, so new business. I have a question before we discuss the vision plan. Is the vision plan part of what we purchased through Marshall, Sterling Marshall?
Yes.
Okay. John Tinka and I, and any other trustee that wants to join us have gone out to two competitors. Uh, and we're working on receiving proposals from them. I will call Rogers and Sterling and ask if we can have some extra time and put them on notice that we're looking at other companies and ask them to bid. Brian, you know, I, I do know that there's rules, regulations, and suggestions. For example, our garbage contract, every 10 years or every five years, you really should go out and get some new numbers. Is that correct?
Is this for insurance?
All of our insurance.
Insurance is not subject to bidding.
It's not, I know it's not subject to bidding, but it's subject to quoting.
Not really.
No, so we don't have to go out if we don't want to. If we want to, would you suggest there's any harm in doing that?
I know there's no harm. It's always a good idea to get the quotes and see who's competitive, you know, for the insurance purposes, but you don't have to do that.
Right, but if we were to, if we were to save $10,000, that would be a benefit to the taxpayers. If we could get the same product. And so let me put it that way. We're, we're exploring to see as fiduciaries if we can get a price that would be apples and apples that we can consider. Now, so Elizabeth, you know if there's a timeframe on this?
I don't.
And I know I've been delaying it.
There is, but I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Okay. Why don't we uh, do a resolution to give me the authority to sign it? Uh, if there's a deadline that's going to, will we lose it? Before we have a chance to look at the other comparisons? And then maybe we could isolate this part out for this. Do you know what I'm saying, everyone?
April 1st.
Okay, April 1st.
A month, a couple days.
Okay, so I don't think we need to do anything until the January, February, April, till the April meeting.
March meeting.
The March meeting. Okay. J, K, N, R, B, oh, okay. So the discussion I'd like to have then is to inform the full board uh, that we have two other entities that we're going to go out to to get competitive apples and apples quotes. And I will inform Sterling and Marshall tomorrow that we're doing that and see if they, what the reaction is. And move accordingly, okay? All right, now. Uh, next, we also had a request from the Town Climate Committee. And I have sent you a email on that. And it is let's see, anyone have that handy?
Is it from Jim?
No, it's from
Garofano.
Professor Garofano.
Yeah.
Right, now does anyone have that handy?
I didn't print it.
You did not print it?
I read it.
Oh, anybody have it handy? Great. Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, I did send this to Jim because, you know, we're, we're working with in conjunction with the town on this committee. Jane writes, I've been working on this committee for almost two years with Michelle Lindsay and Jim Hayes. Trying to secure various grant monies for many critical projects related to making the climate a better place to live. I'm involved in, one, recycling bins in government buildings, town hall, village office, police departments. Two, recycling programs for public places and events, Quarry Field, Powerhouse Park, and more in the town, and Weewaw. Village Boat Club, et cetera. Number three, waste reduction education campaign. We accomplished on Earth Day last April in town and the village. So my question is we do we have the approval to put blue recycled bins in town government buildings? To be picked up by IWS trash? And can we, they do, and they want to know if they can extend that recycling program into the village. So that would be putting those containers at the Weewaw and our government locations. So it sounds on paper like it should be an obvious yes. But I do recall, and I'll have to go back to your memory on this, or Jeff's. When we had waste disposal units here. The weekenders would come and dump all their trash there. It wasn't used as it was supposed to be used for recycling. Like from the village only, from the village building. Or if it was at the Weewaw. You know, we'd put, Jeff would put the bottles in one. And the papers in the other, but then somebody's going to drive by and throw it out. They don't want to leave it in the garbage can. So we ran into that problem. Uh huh. So I mean, I would like to have a further conversation with Jane and Jim to get more detail about whether they're bear proof or this and that, or would they be locks? So that only the village could access them, you know, or whatever we might be able to do to think of doing it? Yeah, so right, so but I'm, I'm all for it. I'm all for the recycling part. So does the board agree that we should gather more information?
I agree.
And then in between meetings? If we hear what we want to hear, we can say, sure, go ahead. I mean, by the time the next meeting comes about, maybe they're a little further along.
I think we should get a recommendation from our climate task force.
Jim?
Yeah.
And I did ask him.
Yeah.
And he hasn't said anything to me yet. Thank you for that. Oh, okay, where are we? We have on the agenda. We have a discussion about the signs at the South Gate. I told Barry Haw, resident Barry Haw that I would address this at today's meeting. He is very much against the signs at the South Gate. Um, and he's referring to the signs that say private area, no trespassing, et cetera. He finds them offensive and wanted me to raise it with the full board. Or I told him I'd raise it with the full board. My personal view is that well, my professional view, and as mayor, I don't have a problem with them. There's been similar signs throughout the last 50 to 70 years. Always at that location. And just to give a little recent history. We started to get a big increase of trespassing, not big, like super big, but people had to go to court, were given trespassing tickets and so forth. And I, I think, I asked the chief, I think these signs have been fairly effective. It's only anecdotal, though, I have no evidence. Hard evidence that it's had that effect. Chief, what do, what do you think of the signs? Down at the South Gate, do you feel that there's something we should keep?
Absolutely, because I, I think you have to post that people are not wanted. Outside people, like people that don't live here, we had a big people, a big problem with people coming in and walking and riding their bikes. And we'd get phone calls like crazy. We'd go out there and arrest people, give them a appearance ticket to come to court. You know, it's a big issue, but they, they have to be told that they're not welcome here before they come in here and you arrest them for it. How do you do that? You do it with a sign.
So Brian, it all, I, I imagine it would also bring potential liability into the, you know, into, into the village if someone's injured. And we don't have signage saying, don't come in here. Uh, maybe that would affect our insurance or the legal case.
Yeah, my suggestion would be I'd rather give my advice outside of the public session as an attorney client.
In a attorney-client privilege, like our executive session this evening?
Provided in writing.
Yeah.
Saying you need to go into a session, but I'd rather give that advice.
Thank you so much. Okay, so Chris.
Oh, this one.
Maybe both.
Oh, yeah, no, no, this one, I see. Okay. So I, I understand Barry's point. This is, this does remind me of approaching a military base, and that's something Barry said, and I would prefer to see something that doesn't remind me of my army days. But I think I'll save my, rest of my comments until attorney-client, so Brian can kind of answer my specific questions.
Okay.
Because I agree, I agree, there has to be the appropriate wording.
Right.
As the question of what that is.
Right. History. Several boards ago. I had met with Jeff and John at the site and had a fairly simple sign ready to go. And to place in the middle, and the other four board members took it upon themselves to take that project out of my hands. And that's what they drafted, and that's where they, that's where they posted it. But I'm not opposed to changing words either. If it would help, and again, like you, I'll wait till we speak to to Brian. Do you have any comments? Okay. Thank you all. Absolutely.
Since we live there, we do know that the people would come through on bikes, people would come through on walking, excuse me. And also, when the garden club would go down there, we would see so many cars that would maybe go through, I think it's better now to say private property, because they sit there, they push the button. Well, why can't we come in, et cetera? And the same thing with the bicycles, the bicycles, they would just put them under and go, and there are no signs. Now, I mean, I, maybe there are signs that we, that shouldn't be there, maybe we have too many, I don't know. But I just also know the fact that we are safer by not worrying about who's coming down where we are, which is a nice area to walk your dog.
Right.
They have a reason to sit at the lake and we see them.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Quick question for chief, how many people do you recall citing in the last two years? I mean, it's, it's increased, is my understanding.
We, there was a lot more warnings and sightings.
Okay, oh, yeah.
All of the citing or arrests were done before my time. Before my tenure.
Okay, so I was just wondering, word gets around.
Strict, strict warnings is what we've been doing since I've been here.
So we're happy.
Because that could have been, that could have had an effect as well as the sign. I'm not saying the sign didn't have an effect, but the sign probably gave you more reason to approach people, stop them, and give them the warnings. Because they've been told.
Right, okay, uh, let's see. Do we have any audit of claims?
Yes, in the general fund, $436,987.43. In the water fund, $39,135.30. And the professional fees, $717.50.
Would you like me to sign off on that?
Yes, please, you want to do that now?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much.
Uh, do we have any budget transfers?
No.
Okay. This ends our
Do my little thing about the bags?
Oh, I'm so sorry, please. I'm sorry, I told Elizabeth to make an announcement, and I, I forgot, I apologize. Elizabeth?
Nice to end on a happy note. Uh, this is about the Tuxedo Bag Project. Two sixth graders, Solomon and Maddie, who reside in Tuxedo Park and attend Tuxedo Park School created the Tuxedo Bag Project to collect donated fresh direct reusable grocery bags and deliver them to the Slutzburg Food Pantry. They eventually expanded it so that it would include any reusable grocery bags. Uh, they had what I thought was a very ambitious goal of collecting a thousand bags, and they met that goal last week. And they also, I got an updated count, they collected 200 more since then. So 1,200 bags. The biggest donor was Village of Tuxedo Park. So I think uh, we're very proud of them, and we're also proud of the fact that we were such a big donor. And this is such a good idea that we are hoping to continue it by keeping a donation box here at the village hall where residents can bring any reusable grocery bags, cloth, plastic, paper, and of course, the fresh direct bags that inspired this project. Please continue your support of this worthy endeavor.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Again, I apologize for skipping over it. All right, so this is the end of our, this portion of our public meeting. Uh, we are going to go into executive session. And that's closed to the general public to discuss collective bargaining. A water bill of a particular resident and a particular village employee and a legal matter. Uh, and after which we will come back into public session, and if there are any resolutions, we will hold them then. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees temporarily leave the public meeting and enter executive session to discuss collective bargaining agreement, a water bill of a particular resident, a legal matter, and a particular village employee. May I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Let's go waiting room. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, if you don't mind. You could help refresh my recollection.
So and we're inviting the chief.
Just, yeah, just for the
Is that mine?
Meant to come early to get on that, and then I didn't.
Okay.
Friday.